Hello, hello. Yeah. Okay, so today is June 4th, 2024, and I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. Karen, could you please call the roll?
President Figaro. Oh, goodness. I believe I'm getting some media team. Okay, there we go. Vice President Duncan. Alder Govindarajan. Alder Conklin. President. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Present.
Alder Uguere. Alder Harrington-McKinney. And Alder Curry is not here. You have four.
Any comments on discussion on the approval of the minutes for last meeting? Seeing no hands or no input, any concerns not in a unanimous vote for the minutes? Okay, so that passes. So, what is the agenda? I got it. So, next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have public comment? We don't have any public comment. So, that take us to items for consideration, and the first item is, oh, I'm sorry, that they take us to disclosures and recusals. Do we have any disclosures or recusals tonight from items on the agenda? Going once, no? All right, no disclosures or recusals, and then that takes us then to items for consideration. And the first item on the agenda is Legisstar Number 83518, requesting information, studies, and plans regarding the authorization of a local sales tax. A motion, please. Motion, and a second, any discussion on this particular item? I see the main sponsor of the item is here, Alder Latimer Perez. Would you like to speak on your item?
I'm sorry, give me a second, please. Oh, thank you. There you go. Thank you. So, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just that, you know, as we face the budget crisis and we have different options with different funds being found, I think for a long term, we can at least start asking to go through the process, and it's just really, it's a furtherance of the original resolution. There's nothing tricky in it. It's just asking us to explore options to see what would happen if we, as a city, pursued a sales tax, which I understand, I did use to work at the state legislature for Senator Taylor, I understand that it's not a possibility right now unless the legislature approves it. So, that's what I'm asking us to explore that, give us information as we, Alders are going to be making different, difficult decisions in November and thereafter, for years thereafter.
Thank you. Any further discussion questions for the sponsor? And Alder Duncan? I'm sorry. Alder Duncan?
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to thank my colleague for putting this forward. I just wanted to get clarification of what the timeframe is for this. I want to make sure, especially with the resources that we have from a finance standpoint and just city staff, if this is something that would be able to be done, and if so, what the specific timeline is that we would be wanting to obtain this information from these entities.
Alder, is it okay if the others, thank you. Alder Latimer Perez, will you please?
Sure, and certainly I can't speak for Director Schmiedeke. With the original sales tax resolution, it did, we talked about it, we met, we conferenced about it, he had input into it, and the issue of time came, the last time it came to the council floor. So, I think Schmiedeke's answer, if I'm not correct, I don't want to put words in his mouth, very careful not to do that, is that it will take some time. Now, how much time that is, I mean, is that an hour? I mean, opening a document will take time. The reason that I wanted it to come through them is that there's no dispute then as to if information's accurate, they know better than anybody else. Obviously, they're focused on things that we can do immediately, but we have a long-term problem. As I understand it, I've been reading the stuff from Wisconsin Policy Institute, which I encourage all of our, all of the Alders to do. I've been reading up on it since November, and the more I read, the more I realize we're in a complicated situation. And so, I think for the taxpayers, for the renters, for those that are trying to live and survive in Madison, it behooves us to spend a little bit of time to explore this option and to say, this is what we can do about it now, this is what we can do in the future, this is what I don't see working, but you guys can go ahead and try. And I actually think it's going to take all of us, if we decide to do this, to lobby the legislature. If we're going to blame them for the whole of the problem that the, what I mean by that is, if we're going to say, it's the state legislatures, they don't give us enough money, that is a 40-year problem. They haven't done that for 40 years, and that's one of the things I've learned from reading. And of course, don't count anything I say as factual, I don't know if it's exactly 40 years, or 39, or 27, but it's a long time. And I think that we've been out there in budget meetings, talking to the constituents, it's all over the board as to what people want. They do want the city to stay great, and so we need to, we need to look at it, and we need to be educated about it. And even that I read, you know, I've read probably 500 pages already on the budget, and the more I read, the more I realize that we are so thankful to Schmiedeke because he is distilling complicated information. So, to answer that simply, I don't know, but if we're going to come up with a possibility that could potentially do $85 million, I think it's worth exploring, and I think it's worth spending staff time on. We're going into a different political environment perhaps, so that might help us, we might get, you know, the wind at our back, we don't know, but regardless, we have to do something different, because I don't think people are going to just accept a referendum year after year after year after year. Everybody has maximums. Long answer, sorry.
Alder Duncan, anything else? Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, and great pronunciation. Just one question on the last line of the first paragraph, calling for a use of the one-time funds to address the deficit for this year. Is that actionable, or is that just like a resolution? I don't know if that makes sense, but like, will this direct the Finance Department to use those one-time funds immediately, is my question, I guess.
Is that a question for staff or for the sponsor? Okay, hold on for a second.
You know, I'm happy to add, look into whatever words that make it feasible. You know, I realize Director Schmiedeke is very busy doing these five meetings, which is coming up, the last one on tomorrow night, and he's really trying to navigate us through the situation. And I know that one of the things that I deduced, and he's here, so he doesn't have to comment on it, but this is my observation, is that he's very concerned about AAA bond rating, not today, but it's something that you've always got to work towards keeping intact. So, it's, if you're uncomfortable to say, nobody's saying that this is the absolute solution, maybe it's a suggestion, just as like we suggest, look at other revenue lines, or we suggest, let's do budget cuts and whatnot. I think in the ordinance that we, not ordinance, the resolution that we passed to direct the mayor and staff to look at different options, I think we laid out, you know, a couple of different things that we want to look at, and then we asked them to say, what other things could we look at? So, it's not like a hard line. It's a, can you look at that, what about this? And it's official, so that the numbers that come down will be accepted as true and verifiable, it won't just be, you know, a certain faction's opinion.
Anything else? Alder Barrow-McKinney?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is, and I don't know if the author of resolution can answer this, is that we have an active lobbyist, and could you share with me the activities of the active lobbyist and where that person will be interjected into this, or what has the lobbyist been effectively doing? Is that something that you can answer?
I cannot answer the day-to-day, what they've been doing. I've talked to lobbyists, we saw the lobbyist when he came to our first committee on the whole meeting. I don't know what the city has done to bring this forth. I know in Milwaukee, the mayor and county exec got deeply involved in it, partly, I think, is because the county exec came out of the state legislature, so he knew that you have to sit on the fence, day in and day out. And I know that, you know, this is, you know, a long-term, long shot, but, you know, we got to shoot our shot, as they would say in Hamilton. So, I would imagine that we go through the lobbyists, it's not something that we're going to just take over, rather, it's something that we can support, and if we're called to help with that, you know, I don't see an issue with trying.
May I have a follow-up question, please?
Yes, please.
And my, my follow-up question is, first of all, thank you very much for the efforts that you put into this document. I did read it, and it shows that you have well-researched it and historically put this document together. And so, with this body, do we have the authority to get the lobbyist involved? Because that is, and I don't know if he is full-time, part-time, or what, or, I don't know what that is, and maybe we should define that, but since this is such an extensive piece that we're looking at, how can we utilize the lobbyist that we have on staff? And I would like to know what the lobbyist involvement and the percentage of time that he would have to offer for moving this along, so it doesn't just kind of sit? That's my question.
Go on.
Again, thank you, Alder Harrington-McKinney. I think if, I'm open to if you want to word it where we submit that suggestion, since we're, you know, as a body, resolutions are made with suggestions. I think it's something that's appropriate to add in, if you want to find a line in there that would update it, or at the end of the meeting, if this passes, we can add that as an addendum, that we would ask that the lobbyist, you know, that we hear back about, from the lobbyist about, you know, what's been done, what we can do and get their input.
Thank you, I'm complete.
Thank you. Alder Uguere? Just a second.
Just like to say that I'm in support of the general concept of this resolution, not totally sure about the most effective format, but perhaps we can work that out. I think we all realize that some adjustments in the state formula for revenue sharing and the authorization of local income taxes has got to be a central part, and we're all hopeful that the change in district definitions may lead to a greater opportunity for an effective bipartisan support or approach to how we do these things. I mean, if nothing else, so that we don't take too much time from staff, it would be helpful to know exactly what the, or at least an outline of the process that Milwaukee followed to successfully get the approval of their sales tax. And hopefully, if we know that by the time the election is finished in November and the new Assembly Representatives and Senators are taking their seat, we would have a sort of a pathway that we could start supporting the effort to get this additional capability for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would really like to hear from Director Schmiedeke, if he is available. Just like, is this feasible for the Finance Committee to do? You know, how effective would this be for the city of Madison, you know, to help push the sales tax? Is that something that goes hand-in-hand? Is this the first step of trying to increase sales tax, or are we going down the wrong avenue? That's what I want to know.
Call me here, where is Dave? Thank you. Go on.
Thank you, thank you for that question, Alder Conklin. So, you may have already talked about this, I walked in the meeting a little bit late after you started, but you have passed a resolution that does call upon a lobbying effort of the legislature regarding a sales tax for the city. And I think in the context of that resolution and its discussion before the council and questions that may have been asked of me, proposals like this have been included in Governor Evers' budgets the past couple of biennia, that would be to authorize a half-cent sales tax for cities with populations of greater than 30,000 in the state. The legislature did not adopt those, they removed those provisions from the budget. I would say that the situation with Milwaukee, I tried to, I think I've described that in previous meetings, is much different from the city of Madison. It faced a considerable budget deficit, primarily driven by significant unfunded pension liabilities. They have their own pension system in the city of Milwaukee, as well as in the County of Milwaukee and the School District of Milwaukee. Those unfunded liabilities totaled in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and they were facing a fiscal cliff a year or two from now if nothing was done. And that would have meant 30% to 40% reduction in services, so closure of multiple fire stations, closure of multiple police districts, closures of libraries. And I think that was a big part of the impetus to, of both the city and the county of Milwaukee, to approach the governor and legislative leadership and to say, you know, Milwaukee is facing sort of the end of the line, and something needs to be done. And that led to legislation in the most recent state legislative session that authorized a 2% sales tax for the city and an additional, I think, 2/10 of a percent on their existing 1/2% for Milwaukee County. Now, many of you may recall that that came with many strings attached to it, including significant limits on the way that they have to budget, how they budget in the city, the elimination, or at least the prohibition on diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, requirements for 2/3 votes on certain increases in their budget, and then statewide, a requirement that is not just for the city or county of Milwaukee, but for all communities across the state, including Madison, and that's a maintenance of effort requirement for police and fire costs. So, I think this idea that Milwaukee was able to do it, that somehow Madison's on the same footing as that, is, I think, based on what I just tried to describe, it's a very different situation that faced the city and county of Milwaukee, the city in particular. Now, that's not to say that Madison has not tried and should continue to try to diversify its revenues, but I think the legislature, at least the current legislature, has been reluctant to, and I wouldn't say reluctant, has not done much for the city of Madison. It has set up formulas and shared revenue that disadvantaged Madison, and the, you know, the change or the prospect for that to happen in the near term is probably relatively low, even with potential changes in political makeup in the legislature. Those tend to be sort of longer-term issues, or maybe other things that happen first before a sales tax, for example, changes or increases in the amount of shared revenue, or changes in the distribution of shared revenue. So, I think it would be, I would not recommend relying on a change in the legislature in terms of building the city's budget, moving forward. Now, that's not to say that can't become a part of a longer-range plan, and it certainly should be regarding revenue diversity and other options, but that does take time, and I think it does, you know, it's an ongoing dialogue and discussion, and we'll see where that, where that all goes. So, I hope I answered your question, it's a very long-winded answer, but I hope I covered what you were looking for.
You did, Director Schmiedeke, and I just want to make some things clear, if I can. What I heard you say is that we've already passed a resolution to have a lobbyist to do this work for us, and that it's been stopped at the state legislature, we've been trying, but we cannot get it passed the state legislature at the state level, so that way, we're not able to pass it, and we have a very different situation from Milwaukee to Madison. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. I just think, at this time, I don't think that I will be able to support this, because I really feel like the work is already being done, it's done at a higher level than what we're going to be able to do, and with the way that the budget is set up, the finances' time, the staff time... And with the way that the budget is set up, the finances time, the staff time, I just don't think that this would be wise for us to invest in this at this moment when the work's already being done. I would like to see us be more focused and on the budget and being able to help the budget than kind of hindering, hindering it some more. So, thank you.
Alder, thank you. Alder Govindarajan? Govindarajan? Oh, I got you.
Thank you. Director, can, thank you, by the way, for that very thoughtful answer. I just have a very quick question on the use of one-time funds to address the deficit. As I mentioned earlier, for some reason, I'm just stuck on this part. That's not directing you to make any immediate change to the 2025 budget as is, correct? Or if I'm wrong, you can just answer however, but...
Thank you. Thanks for that question, Alder Govindarajan. I think that's a little unclear. I mean, ultimately, the council will have to adopt a budget. And I, you know, I guess it's a matter of if the council were to adopt this, it is sort of saying that is the policy of the council in developing the budget, that one-time funds be used to do that. Now, again, once, you know, that is not adopting the budget, passing this resolution. And so you could then return, when you actually adopt the budget, to, you know, pass a budget that doesn't include one-time funds. Plus, you may have subsequent resolutions to the one that's before you today that could call for other approaches on the budget, whether it's a referendum, ballot question, or something like that. So I think it would, creates a little bit of confusion about what is the policy goal, goals of the council. But nonetheless, it doesn't sort of bind you in a subsequent piece of legislation or resolution that you might adopt. I hope that's clear. Because it does say certain words in the resolution, and I assume those have some meaning, so...
That does make sense. Thank you. And then I vaguely remember this from the downtown budget meeting last week. You had mentioned that there are certain restrictions to using one-time funds, the rainy day funds. Can you expand on that a little bit, just from my memory?
Sure. Regarding the use of the city's rainy day funds, or what we also like to call it, the general fund balance or reserves, there's no sort of legal or ordinance restriction. We do have a policy target of at least 15% in amount, equal to 15% of our budget in reserve. That is a target we've had for many years. And it's a part of sort of the, you know, foundation that we have towards our strong fiscal condition in the city. That includes our strong economy, you know, strong fiscal management, as exhibited by the council and the mayor, and reasonable and responsible use of debt. And all of that comes together from our borrowing perspective in our AAA bond rating. And with that AAA bond rating, we get the lowest interest cost on our debt, which is a benefit to taxpayers. So using the rainy day fund for ongoing costs could potentially be interpreted negatively by rating agencies, could have some future effect on that bond rating, as would reducing those rainy day funds. And that could also have an effect as well, which then could result in a rating downgrade and potential increase in interest costs. And then I would say best practices in budgeting are not to use one-time funds for ongoing expenditures as a large share of your budget, because those activities and costs are a part of what makes the city what it is in terms of supporting the tax base and the economy. That also can cycle back into how rating agencies view the city's finances. So I think all those issues together are ones to consider carefully when using one-time funds.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alder Martinez-Sudefort?
Thank you. I would like to ask Alder Latimer-Burris. I am grateful for your work on this. I guess I'm confused just because I know it's part of our lobbyist agenda and has been on there, has been a priority for a little bit. I guess I'm, is there another aim that this would, would have that you want to accomplish that I'm missing?
Is that okay? Is that okay to skip for Latimer-Burris? Would you like to answer? Thank you.
Yeah, and then I, I'll answer that. And I would like to ask a follow-up question if I could with Director Schmiedeke following the other Alders' question. So how I view this and why I've spent so much time, I mean, I pretty much cleared my schedule to do nothing but learn about the budget and try to understand what's going on and whatnot, is in the end, we're going to have a responsibility as much as the executive office for the budget. We are going to be held responsible to it. The taxpayers are not going to separate the two. They want a long-term solution. And I think that we, in asking, basically, this is asking for information, asking it for it officially, so it's not Alder Ramani's opinion, and asking to say, okay, what have we done? What have we done with the lobbyists? What are we doing with the lobbyists? What's the possibility there? Because if we had done this work at such a high level and it was, you know, it all worked out, we wouldn't have a deficit. So we are up against a long-term issue that's complicated. And I appreciate that Director Schmiedeke is working very hard to give us simplified answers, because it's complex. So at the budget meeting, for example, he can't start out on level 5.0. We have to first get to first level, then the second level. And it is our responsibility as Alders, especially if we're taking on the budget for the first time this year, for the first time getting educated in January and February, for the first time being involved in the process. If we are going to go on the record about it, I think that we can, you know, ask a few questions. I don't like saying the word directing because I think that Director Schmiedeke probably knows better than anybody else. But we have, we should ask these questions. We should consider things, because our constituents are asking questions. And we can't say, yeah, we know what the lobbyist has done to lobby a sales tax or not, or 20 other issues. And we are going to have to accept, as we come to the fall, some type of solution, whether it be, you know, using one-time funds, whether it be increasing some kind of tax on something, for example, a wheel tax or something of the like, whether it be cutting services, whether it be furloughing, whether it be, you know, asking the employees to, staff to do special things. All of us are concerned about staff. All of us are concerned about the long-term budget. All of us are concerned about the impact that we have on people, whether they can afford the increase or not. So I don't think there's anything wrong with asking. It's not a political thing. And I actually did spend time, a great deal amount of time, going through and trying to be educated before I drafted this. So I'm open to, you know, the ifs that people want to include, which are, which I'm seeing are, you know, look at the possibility of if A, B, or C. I wrote them down. I don't have that right in front of me. But that's that. But I also want to, so I hope they answered your question. And I wanted to ask Director Schmiedeke if we've ever in the past few years used one-time funds.
Alder, can, can we finish with her first?
Yeah, I, thank you. I guess, I know that we've heard from the lobbyists and it's proven out that we have requested that there be a sales tax for us in the budget since the mayor has been elected. And I just, I guess I'm not understanding what this would accomplish outside of knowing that and knowing that it'll take time. I guess that's what I, that's what I was really asking. And I do, I greatly appreciate your, the work you've done to put it together. So, thank you.
I'll get back to you in a minute, okay? Alder Harrington McKinney? I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'll circle back to the reserves. But my thinking in this is that we are going before taxpayers to pass a resolution. And in that, we're also supporting the fact that we are strongly pursuing other avenues, because what they want to hear is what else are we doing? I understand that we have a lobbyist. And by no means do I even think that this is something that the Finance Committee can take on, because there's a whole load of things that they're doing. So I want you to be very clear on that. But what I am saying is that as we are out there talking with constituents about solutions, I want to be able to say, these are the things that we are actively, strongly doing. Does it take time and all of that? Absolutely. I get that. But we need to be saying that these are the alternatives that we're looking at, we're strongly, and I get it that, you know, our lobbyist has gone before the state legislator and it has not been successful. But what kind of strength, teeth, support can we give to our lobbyists to be more actively engaged? Because in order to do this, in order to pass the resolution, we've got to be able to show that we are also doing A, B, C, and strongly doing that as alternatives. And so that's why I am looking at what my, the Alder put forward. And that's why I'm leaning towards supporting it, because I want to have some teeth, some strong teeth into the alternatives that what else are we doing? And that's what I hear when I'm out in the community, is what else are we doing? What else are we doing? And we need to start saying, these are the what-else's. And so as we are developing the sale of the referendum, I want to be able to see, to say also, these are the what-else's. These are the other things that we are doing. And then in lieu, we can get more passed. And so that's why I'm very comfortable with, and we can change the language. And I would definitely like to have our lobbyists come back and report to us that activity, so we can actively stay engaged and stay informed. But I'm looking at the what else are we doing? And that, this is on the other side of what else are we doing? So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Duncan, Vice President Duncan?
Is this where we could make a motion, or are we still in discussion?
Can make a motion. I have one more person on the queue.
I'll let that come back then.
Alder Govindarajan?
I was also going to make a motion, so go ahead.
Let's have Alder Latimer-Burris have a last chance here to us quick.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to ask Director Schmiedeke, if we've used one-time funds in the past to help balance the budget? You know, you don't have to be extremely precise, which I know you are, but generally in the past decade, we'll go back decades, so it's fair. Have we used one-time funds to cover, to cover the budget?
Thanks for that question, Alder Latimer-Burris. Most of the city budgets have include, included some amount of fund balance applied. It tends to be a relatively very small share of the budget. But yes, funding from fund balance has been applied in previous budgets. I would say most previous budgets have had some amount applied.
Thank you. Alder... Okay, I'm just going to go in the order, because now I got a bunch of hands up here. So Vice President Duncan?
I wanted to make a motion to place it on file.
Okay, so there's a motion to place it on file. Is there a second?
Second, if no one else has said it.
She's here. Karen has a question for the attorney. You go ahead and ask.
Hi, sorry, Deputy Attorney Lawton. Can you help me with a procedural thing here? We have, we have a motion on the floor. Duncan originally moved to approve, seconded by Alder Govindarajan. And now Duncan is moving to place on file. And I just want to make sure I've got the right moves here. So what do we do with that first motion? Since that's the same, the person who made the first motion, should they first withdraw their motion and then make another one? I'm not really sure. Sorry.
No, that's fine. If the original motion was to place on file, then you can just vote on that. But if the original motion was something different, you have to clear that before you can move to place it on file.
Okay, so the original motion was to approve. So then I, as far as I am...
You can take a vote.
That has to be the vote.
Or they can withdraw it?
Or they can withdraw the motion and make a new motion to place on file.
Those are the two options. Okay, thank you very much. They can either vote on it or withdraw it. You would have to withdraw it, and the second would have to concur.
Alder Govindarajan's a point of information?
Yes. The person who seconded was Alder Conklin, not me. I have a completely separate motion that we can do later. Thank you.
Okay, so can we just...
Point of order, though. I did not second the original one. I just seconded if we were going to put it on file. I did not second the original one.
Let's just, let's just, let's just, I have... Karen? Can we just, can you withdraw the motion and we just go back to where we were? Yes. So, thank you. So then I have Alder, I'm going to continue discussion. And once the discussion is over, then we take a vote. And if that passes, we move on. If it doesn't pass, we make a new motion. So I have in the queue Alder Harrington McKinney. And give me one second. One second, one second.
This is a clarifying question. It's just that if the motion is to place on file, would that also leave the opportunity to make a substitute motion? At what point would a substitute motion to place on file without prejudice come into play? I just want to know where it stands.
So right now, we are going to take a vote of the first, what we have on the table, which is to pass the motion. If that fails, then whoever can make a motion to either put it on file, put it on file, put it on file without prejudice, or whatever. And then we vote on that.
Another clarifying question?
Hold on a sec. Sorry, one sec. I think actually, no, because if you, if you, right now, if he first motion, yeah, if he withdrew, and we don't have a second, I have to go back and see who seconded that. The second, the motion that's now on the floor is to place on file. Conklin, he said seconded that. So I think if she wants to make an alternate, like an amendment to the motion, if she wants to move to place on file without prejudice, it's a second.
Even with the first motion?
This one's withdrawn. So do you mean this one, the second one?
This one.
That's, he withdrew.
Oh, so you withdraw the first motion?
Yeah.
Could we have a motion from the original individual to withdraw so that we can clear that?
That's what I was asking.
I withdrew, put on file. And so then the second, the first and the second is, Alder Conklin would have to, if she's okay with moving, place it on file.
What he needs to do is remove the first motion. And who seconded the first motion?
No one says that.
Who seconded the first motion?
John did. Oh, thank you.
No, I didn't.
The first motion?
No, I didn't second.
Yeah, I thought it was you.
The first motion. Yes, it was you. Okay. Okay. So, we need to withdraw the first motion?
And you have to concur.
And you have to concur. Okay, so now on the floor, the first motion is gone. The second motion is...
Place on file.
To place on file.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. And we need a second for that.
Second.
And who seconded that? I'm sorry.
So, placing on file means is that it can, if I'm out of order, please...
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I thought Conklin originally. What did we do to second?
Who seconded this motion, I heard, but...
I just, it...
You did second it?
Yes.
Because I heard the, but then, okay, got it. So you seconded. So what's the question?
So I just wanted to make sure it's a place on file without prejudice, which means that it can come before the body again. I'm seconding it that.
Okay, perfect. So now we have a motion on the floor to...
And I do want to interject quickly that it's gonna be a recommendation to the council to place on file.
Correct. That is correct. We're not, this is going to cancel eventually, and we're recommending to cancel. Right? All right. So, we have a motion on the, on the...
I heard you.
I got it. We have a motion to put this on file. We have a second. Do we have, for a discussion? And it looks like Alder Latimer Burris.
I guess I had a point of information, so I don't want to get lost in it. What are the implications of putting it on file without prejudice? If the attorney could answer that, does that mean that it can come back within 60 days? It's gotta go through six different committees. And so, one of the Alders had suggested that we refer it to the next meeting so it can go through the other committees and then come back to this committee thereafter. So, I just want to make sure that it doesn't just get killed in committee.
Right, right now, the motion that you're considering is to recommend that the common council place it on file. If you want to do something else with it, then again, you have to withdraw the motion before you and make other motions. But right now, you're making a recommendation to the council to place it on file.
Can I, can I interject here? So, the other, we are just making a recommendation to cancel? So are the other committees. So the resolution continues. We're not voting on behalf of anybody else. So it goes to the other committees, and then all those recommendations will come to cancel with that information?
On the seventh floor.
Yeah. Please, go ahead.
Just a point of information. If the attorney could ask, if the attorney could answer, placing on file, is that 60 days before it can seen, before it can be seen back at CCEC? I don't want to get into like killing, what's the implication of putting it on file, you know, full stop? What's the full stop implications of that?
Okay, you're not putting it on file. You're making a recommendation. So you would have to wait until the council takes some action before you would know what you could do with it at that point. Okay? And they are getting recommendations from others, so we have to wait to see how the council's going to handle it.
And then my other question, just to back, you know, subsequent question is, does that create a higher threshold to override what CCEC says? Because that's another thing that we, so if there's a recommendation, for example, that comes out of, I'll just say Landmark's Commission, it's a higher threshold when it gets to city council to override that. So does that put us in that situation? Point of information I'm asking.
Yeah, it is the lead referral agency whose action goes to the council. And then it's 60 days before it can be introduced again. Does that help?
I just want to clarify that the motion that I've got written down is to place on file without prejudice. Just want to make that clear.
It's a recommendation to...
And it's a recommendation to council to place on file without prejudice. And I do believe finance is the lead. We're not the, I don't believe CCEC is the lead on this one. So it would actually, in the official language, would be recommended to the lead to place on file without prejudice. And then that would be one of, one, four, I think, recommendations. And then the lead, the recommendation of the lead would be the one that goes on the agenda.
You go.
I was, I was waiting for the green light. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what's before us. So, Vice President Duncan made the motion to place on file without prejudice, seconded by Harrington McKinney. That is what we're considering. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, any, any other comments, questions for staff? Okay, so on that note...
I'm sorry, point of order, because Alder Curry had her hand up.
I don't see her.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see that.
I was just gonna call the question, sorry. Go ahead with the vote.
All right, thanks. Well, getting there. So, I'm not sure how this is gonna go, so I'm just gonna ask for a roll call.
Vice President Duncan?
Hi.
Alder Govindarajan?
Hi.
Alder Conklin? Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Yes.
Alder Uguere?
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes.
Okay. That with six eyes, the motion?
The motion passes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Legisstar 83765, Sexual Harassment Appendix for the Elected and Appointed Office Code of Ethic, of, Code of Ethic Conduct. Do we have Erin?
Yes, she's in the, on the Zoom.
Okay. So we have a presentation from Erin here to introduce this item. And Karen, I need help with this, because I don't, oh, I see her right here. So...
Unmute? Did you see that?
She moved up.
She unmuted. She's okay. I think they unmuted her.
Okay. Oh, there she is. Thank you. I believe Karen sent a copy of the latest revision to the CCEC staff, and it's also in Legisstar, correct?
Yeah.
So Erin, thanks for being here. Check it over.
Good afternoon. So, a few of us, including the City Attorney's Office, were asked to provide more clarity in terms of policy related specifically to sexual harassment. We, some folks had drafted, and then the Office of City Attorney reviewed, I reviewed, we had input from the Department of Civil Rights as well, to make sure that any code of conduct had sort of all of the things that we would require in terms of clarity on prohibited conduct. So there's a list of prohibited conduct related to any complaints. There is clarity there in terms of how prohibited conduct gets reported, who's responsible for that reporting, and then for receipt of those complaints, where those, where those complaints go. And in large part, receipt of those complaints and further processing of those complaints are handled in the same way that other forms of harassment and discrimination are handled within the City of Madison, especially under APM 3-5 that's overseen by the Department of Civil Rights, where folks from the Department of Civil Rights, Human Resources, and City Attorney's Office review those complaints, identify whether or not an investigation is necessary, and then take corrective action as appropriate. Once an investigation is completed, there is a required debriefing of not only the complainant and the respondent, but also council president and the council chief of staff on the findings of the investigation. There was some discussion about mandatory release of a summary of those investigations, and some concern about the potential for it to have a chilling effect on complainants, for us to include a sort of mandatory release without consideration for things like safety of complainants, perception, or fear of reprisal and that sort of thing. We do want to make sure that we are very clear that regardless of whether or not anyone wants those records to be released, there is an absolute requirement that we follow public records law, which requires those documents to be released after we've redacted them in accordance with state law. And then it just also includes a little bit about retaliation, why retaliation is prohibited, and that sort of thing. So it functions really in concert with our, our policy, the regular code of conduct, just providing a little more detail around what is and, what does and doesn't constitute sexual harassment and discrimination, and then in alignment with the code of conduct that you have all already adopted.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Alder Harrington McKinney? Were you in the queue? Were you in the queue?
I was.
Okay, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, is that, and maybe I don't have the revised one, this Appendix A has gone through, before it's before us, what, where has it gone through? I mean, before it was drafted, has it gone through Department of Civil Rights, the, so we have an existing document, resolution that has already been approved. This is an addendum to that, that, that document. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's an addendum to your, your code of conduct.
Okay.
To provide more clarity specific to sexual harassment.
Okay. And so...
I think your question was, who's it gone through? It's gone through the Department of Civil Rights, the Office of City Attorney, and the Human Resources Department.
And so this amendment, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. This amendment, which is an addendum to the original Code of Conduct, has gone through those three entities before it's being presented to us for discussion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Alder Field?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the identity of the complainant piece of summary release. So how do we determine what identifying information can be redacted under state law? If it's not clear, could you describe a little more about what, what goes into a decision about whether names can be redacted, the complainant's name specifically?
Yeah, Attorney Lawton's here. Yep.
Yeah, so each document is different because each document or investigation is going to have different components to it. There are a variety of things we look at. One is whether it would pose a health or safety risk to the complainant, if they've asked for anonymity, if there could be potential retaliation. And that is not necessarily in statute, but that would be under the balancing test that is allowed us under the public records law.
That was helpful. Thank you.
All right. Alder Harrington McKinney?
This is a follow-up question. For the balancing test that you mentioned, who would make the decision of what would be redacted and what would not? And whether it's within the balancing test that you mentioned?
Sure. So typically, under the public records law, the requests are to the records custodian. So the custodian who is in charge of the record. So that could be, and generally is, a particular department. And then the department, in consultation with our office, would determine what redactions could be made or should be made to the document before being released.
Any other questions in the, nope. I do have a question that Alder Wohili asked earlier. She couldn't make it to the meeting today, so I just want to get this on the record. She was wondering, I mean, I think I had the answer for it, but I'd rather hear it from you guys, when a, what happens when an Alder, if there's an issue between an Alder and a city staff, is that, is there a process to manage that, that conflict? Not a member of the public, but a city, city staff?
Yeah, so this is really the process that manages that sort of thing. Because, and we would, we would also look at it under APM 3-5 potentially. Because as elected officials, we don't use all of the same processes that are included under APM 3-5. We don't have, for example, corrective action plans where we can issue discipline or something like that to an Alder, even if they have engaged in behavior toward city staff. If it's vice versa, if it's city staff toward an Alder as the employer of those city staff, we would typically use the process under APM 3-5 or the process under APM 2-33 to address any behaviors. I will also add that we do have confidential mediation services through EAP and FEI, who is our external EAP affiliate, who we sometimes use to help resolve complaints outside of the investigation process if both parties are in agreement and it's level enough that it doesn't require other sort of corrective action.
Thank you, Director Hilsen. And she also wanted to know what happens if an Alder is in a public space, in a public place, misbehaving, and it's not a city-sponsored event?
So, it depend, the answer is it depend, it's going to... It's going to be very context-specific. If it violates the code of conduct, including this particular addendum, we are still going to, because of the language in the code of conduct, potentially investigate that. It may be someone who is a constituent and maybe someone who is a member of the public who is the person who sort of receives the unwanted contact. And so we would still go through the same process, even if it's not city staff. I will note that, you know, there are obviously times where conduct between individuals becomes criminal or a matter of, a matter that the courts deal with rather than us.
Thank you. Alder Govindarajan? Nope. Maybe I should let you speak.
Thank you. Had to wait for the red light. Is consistent misgendering part of sexual harassment in this code of conduct? And if it isn't, can that be added?
Director Hilsen? Or Deloitte?
Let me just check.
I was looking at bullet point two or three where it could maybe work, but just wanted that clarification.
Yeah, it's not, it isn't super clear. And so obviously, this body could make a modification to include specifically consistent misgendering. I will note that APM 2-52 does include consistent misgendering as a violation of city policy.
Okay. Thank you.
And APM 2-52 is our gender-inclusive workplace policy.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I guess I'm, not guess, I am somewhat confused about the outcome, actions, deliverables. It's, it sounds as though it's directed to a specific misconduct, but is this generalized enough where it encompasses where the City of Madison will be standing, going, and moving forward for any issue that comes before them for consideration? I guess I don't see a clear pathway in terms of implementing and actions and outcomes. It's still very unclear to me what we're trying to achieve. If that, it makes sense in my head. It might not make sense, but that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Alder, thank you. It does make sense. So the original code of conduct actually includes what the outcomes are. This does not get very specific about the outcomes themselves. And I will note that the outcomes are not as clear as when we are not dealing with the conduct of elected officials. When we're dealing with the conduct of employees specifically, we go through corrective action plans, which might include things like retraining. It might include things like recommended mediation. Sometimes it includes things like reassignment of duties in different places and/or corrective action in terms of disciplinary processes or letters on file with employees, up to and including potentially lengthy suspensions or terminations. When it comes to elected officials, the actions that we can take are fewer, and it really relies on legislative bodies to make determinations related to sort of corrective action and next steps. We can't remove an alder if an alder commits a certain type of violation. But just noting that the original code of conduct does have some of those specifics that you're looking for in terms of like sort of what's recommended in terms of outcomes if there's a violation. So this addendum really just identifies very specifically the sexual harassment part of identified prohibited conduct.
I think that does address my question because when we look at the code of conduct, there are specific outcomes, actions, and this sounds as more as a reprimand. And help me to understand because I'm not really, really seeing the purpose of this and what the outcome, what are we trying to get at? That's where I'm stumbling.
Yep. So this is an addendum to the original. So the original is still in full force and effect and applies to these types of behaviors. This just calls out specific types of behaviors that are, that would fall under prohibited conduct in accordance with the original, the original language, the original code of conduct that you approved.
My final question is, is that if we are applying the Appendix A, would that indeed fit with the code of conduct for an employee? Would that, would that have the same outcomes as we are doing in Appendix A?
Yeah, so the same types of behaviors are prohibited. And so we would go through investigative processes. We would go through corrective action plans and disciplinary processes for employees who engage in this kind of behavior. The difference is sort of the, we don't have the same employer ability to engage in some of those same corrective action plan steps.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to just let you know that we have a time coming up that we need to, we need to do the swap for the next meeting. But Alder, Uguere?
Yes. Just to carry on a little more detail on what Alder Harrison McKinney was just asking about for clarification. So as I understand what you're saying, we're really looking at the item on potential actions under the Elected and Appointed Official Code of Ethical Conduct. Among those things besides censure, it says removal of a common council member from office. Per statute, alders and appointees to BCCs can only be removed by a vote of council for cause, meaning inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct, or malfeasance in office. That's basically where an appendix to this would lead us as far as possible actions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Govindarajan. I do want you to speak.
Thank you. I just sent a quick amendment to include misgendering into this as bullet point number four. That's all. It's in all of your emails. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is not a vote item. We will, we can, we can add it. This is actually a discussion item for us to collect additional information. Please email that information to Karen. We can add it to the policy, and then we will go ahead and introduce it to council. And if there's any committees that need to be rerouted, we can do that. It wouldn't necessarily have to come back here. We can then just, you know, send it to council for introduction and take a vote at a later time. So with that said, I think we're being kicked out of this room already. We will go ahead. There's a couple more items on the agenda, but we can re-referral those to next meeting. They're just reports, and you have the paperwork with you anyway. So with that said, I am looking for an adjournment. Motion, a second, please? Okay, so.
It was the second. Sorry, I missed it. Thank you.
So with that, we adjourn this meeting. Oh, is there any option, any objection of recording any honest vote? Do you want me to exclude you, Derek? Oh, you're not even part of this committee. Well, that, we are adjourned. Thank you.